I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education. Present is Mrs. Jessica Gerber, myself, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Anthony Calabrese, Ms. Fisher Pitko, Mrs. Jennifer Maxon Cannelly, and Mr. John Llewellyn. We don't expect Mrs. Lou McCormick, but we do expect two other board members. If I could ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and the flag is to my right, your left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
While this is a replacement meeting for the regular meeting, it has to be called a special meeting because the only things that are regular meetings are those that are posted as of January. We are holding it a little bit earlier so that we can take public comment on the McKinley Racial Imbalance Plan. This is a difficult issue, and I would ask that each member have respect for people's comments and respect for each other's comments as well. We'll exercise the same protocol that we have in the past, which is three minutes for a comment. There is a sign-in sheet. You don't have to sign in in advance to speak, but we would ask you if you would sign when you get up there. That'll make it easier for us to keep the required record of public speakers. And so with that as a statement, this is a hearing not on issues on the special meeting agenda, but specifically comments on the racial imbalance plan as it is currently known. We are anticipating, pending board discussion, that this will be placed on the April 6th Agenda for Action, at which time members of the public will also be able to speak on the plan at that meeting date. So there'll be a second opportunity for you as well. With that having said, who would like to come up to the microphone first? State your name and address. On patients. Please do.
You didn't start the clock yet, right?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna sign my name first. Oh, I'll be loud enough, don't worry. All right, greetings, board. For those of you who are not familiar with me, my name is Sally Connolly, and I've been a Fairfield parent since 2007, when my eldest entered the pre-K at McKinley. That son is now a seventh grader at Tomlinson, and my three younger children are all attending McKinley. I am currently their PTA Cultural Arts Director and work in Fairfield as a speech-language pathologist. I am here to recommend some addendums to the revised racial imbalance plan. I was one of two McKinley parents who made the trip to the State Board of Ed meeting in Hartford in January, having been tipped off that the Commissioner of the Board was slated to reject outright Fairfield's racial imbalance plan. Our three-minute statements, coupled with a McKinley, Fairfield, and overall bipartisan community letter-writing campaign and online petition, transitioned that rejection to an approval with conditions. During that meeting, it was evident that we changed minds by painting a more vivid picture of our inclusive, diverse, and thriving McKinley community. In fact, members of the Board went so far as to suggest that McKinley is the type of school that all of our communities should be striving for. The Commissioner even cited statistics proving that the minority community at McKinley is performing better than in our other district schools. With that said, they were adamant that they need concrete solutions from our district. I believe that the newly revised plan needs to do the following. One, impart the objective satisfaction of the community, McKinley, via an easy-to-create and easy-to-share survey using something like a Survey Monkey medium. This information will allow the district to convey that McKinley parents are happy where they are and opposed to immediate redistricting, lessening the urgency. Plus, it is easy and free. Secondly, I think we should highlight what we already have and use that to our advantage. During a meeting with Dr. Jones, myself and some other concerned McKinley parents stressed the importance of marketing our opt-in program via a PR letter and open house. Why should we have to reinvent the wheel so quickly? In a year where we face an extreme budget crisis, we need to look first at the voluntary versus the forced movement of McKinley families by highlighting what we already have. I have already emailed each of you, Dr. Jones and Mike Cummings, a copy of a sample PR letter in addition to other specific ideas. Even since sharing many pro-M McKinley sentiments and statistics via my own social media platform, I have had three families approach me about opting in to McKinley next year. Let's create and share this campaign together as a community, and I believe that we will be able to solve some of our problems prior to additional consultants, magnet development, and redistricting expenses. After all, it was the voice of the community that ultimately changed the minds that be in Hartford in January. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anybody else wish to come forward and speak on the racial imbalance plan? Seeing no one, this portion of the meeting, the hearing, is closed. And again, as I say, April 6th, in all likelihood, it will be on the Agenda for Action, and you'll be able to speak at that time as well. Business items, we have the first reading of the racial imbalance timeline, enclosure number one, and I think the superintendent would like to make some opening comments.
Just as a reminder, on the racial imbalance plan, when we were in front of the State Board of Education, they did approve the plan. And I think it's important for us to remind everybody that the plan was approved with the condition that we had a timeline. So we're not really looking at the entire plan and opening back up what the Board has already resolved. The portion that is new does start on page seven, and that is the Benchmark Planning Section Six. And the first thing that you see are the focus tasks and the timelines. And we've just tried to group these so that they're easy for the community and for the Board of Education to understand what's in the timeline. There are five components to the plan. There's community engagement. We have our pre-kindergarten focus and the steps that we're taking underneath each one of these, open choice, the magnet or other program options, and then the last section is looking at redistricting the elementary schools. So when you first look at those two pages, it's just giving you the overview of the five areas. Right behind that, it's taking that same information and putting it in a timeline, action steps. And that's why you'll see on the left-hand side where it says focus, it'll have 2.0 pre-kindergarten, and then all of a sudden you'll see community engagement. And that's because that third column over is the actual timeline, so you can look at it chronologically. And that timeline, when it says January of 2017, or it says June of 2018, means on or before. It doesn't mean it has to be exactly June of 2018. But there are target dates for us that we're working on, really all of these issues between now and when we get to that last item. From that, I can take any questions that the Board has about the timeline.
Okay. If we focus our attention on those pages, do we have questions or comments that board members would like to make? Mrs. Gerber.
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Jones. I guess just going off of the public hearing comment that we had in the letter that we did receive from that individual regarding the idea of trying to make more of or publicize better the opt-in. Would that be something that, I mean, it seems, at least on the surface, that it would be relatively, if any, low-cost, you know? And I know it would take staff time, so I do understand that. But, you know, just doing some PR, especially for kindergarten registration. And I would also say, you know, we do have a number of students, especially K through two, who come in throughout the course of the year, so maybe just even to have a packet prepared for students registering for kindergarten and any students who are coming into Fairfield from another town who might not know all of the different schools and might be more open to wanting to, you know, take a look at McKinley. So just curious if that was something that you might want to explore.
I think it is something, and I like the word "explore" because I've tried to kind of express also that in this timeline, everything really is about exploration, more so than actually taking an action step to make something happen today. And one of the aspects that we're watching McKinley so closely for is there aren't very many seats there. And so we're being very cautious about how we fill those seats as we just start in this next 12 months to work through this. When we were pulling their numbers today, they're at 458 students. And because that building, although it's a 504, we're really trying to understand with their lower per-student class sizes, that 504 doesn't get us as far. So we're kind of exploring that right now, where we probably would not want to be too aggressive about filling what few seats we have between now and September. But certainly the opt-in is still there. Does that explain that?
Well, I guess just maybe even to, if you're going to, you know, consider doing some PR for McKinley, saying that we do have a limited number of seats. However, it's something that you'd be interested in exploring, you know, because we do know that their enrollment tends to fluctuate more than any other elementary school. So just to have in hand, I mean, I realize that that's not that easy to kind of pinpoint, but just to kind of have a standing thing, like a, you know, McKinley packet with information about the school that, you know, would just kind of be there without a lot of cost. So that was just a question on that. And then the other question, too, about the survey, so I know that there is a survey, but it's, you said, community survey.
1.8, I think.
Yes. So that community survey, by community survey, do you mean the McKinley community? Or do you mean community all elementary? Or?
Well, in the timeline, it really could be a McKinley survey. It could be a different survey if we're looking at opting in or coming into a specialized program. So we probably wouldn't know exactly what we want to survey until we get closer to that time.
And where, I'm sorry, where is that on the timeline?
1.8. Let me find that for you.
December.
Yeah, is it 17? Yeah, December 17.
Okay. I mean, would there be any reason to not do it earlier? Or is December kind of, you had that in mind, you're just kind of waiting to get through this, the 2017-18 beginning of school year and then do it?
We are waiting to get through the beginning of the year, but also to see what happens at McKinley in the fall. Again, because we have so few seats and they're growing so quickly. And McKinley is the building where we added two kindergartens this school year.
Right.
And so we just, we're trying to make sure that whatever we survey on is something that we're actually getting good information that we could act upon.
Okay.
And it may change between now and September.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I'll start at the end, Mr. Llewellyn, followed by Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Perfect. Actually, I wanted to follow up on that if I could, please. We're hearing that McKinley has very few seats, but on page six, it says we have 50 seats, and it could be a magnet school. Can you balance that for us, please?
Well, and I think that that is part of the exploration right now, because we, when we pulled, these are numbers as of today, that we're at, what did I say, 450? 458? 458. And what we're trying to understand is, although it's a 504 school, because it has a lower per-student number in the classrooms, your classrooms don't take you quite as far. When we're looking at the magnet option, or whatever option that would be, we need to be able to calculate how many open seats we have in the building to actually fill. And if, does that program have, for instance, a cost with it? And if it does, does it even help the racial imbalance aspect if the number is not large enough? And that's what we're trying to watch, looking at all the trends right now.
For the purpose of this, should it just be removed from the plan? Because it doesn't sound like it's feasible if you want to keep our classroom size as it is at McKinley. I mean?
As far as magnet options?
Correct.
I think we'll know more in the fall about that, and part of that depends on what that option looks like and what is the minority balance of an option. For instance, if we put in an international, you know, immersion, language immersion, we're probably going to be a magnet. Of that magnitude would be more attractive to make the minority population go up. But when we look across the population of all 11 schools, that population is actually small. So what is the magnet that would actually help in that building to bring it into balance?
Right, okay, thank you. And then I'm wondering if we have a typo on page 11, and about halfway down, it says, "Under 3.2 task, conduct a cost analysis over the past 10 years." Should that be March of 17?
It really was looking, going into next year, I mean, March of 18.
But this is the same information that the Board of Finance has asked for a couple times, right? And I thought at the last meeting that that was something that was imminent.
Well, we, I mean, we have the basic numbers. I think we've put those out there as far as how much money or how much revenue we actually bring in. What I would say is we have not been able to parse out that number according to some of the questions that have been asked as of today.
So if we look at, what's the state, what's the state data system called? It's called, what is it? PSIS? Is that?
Yeah, the staff would know better than I about that.
Do you use that correct? Is that on an individual student basis? Is that going to give us some, I mean, we know that we have a disproportionately higher number of children with needs coming in as those open-choice children. I think we said it was around 17 versus 11 as the average. I think that is what was said. So we know right off the bat what the cost for those individuals are, because they're followed under an IEP. So we know that the statement that it's a zero cost is not a correct statement, because there is a cost there associated with it as we continue to grow and bring in, you know, additional staff members to help in that area. So I'm not sure why we can't get at least kind of the floor of that number almost immediately. I mean, the data all exists in a spreadsheet right now, or in a system, and it can be downloaded off of that state website, I would assume.
Honestly, it's not that easy. And I think it's because if you take, for instance, a teacher, you can't, it's difficult to take what, a teacher in a classroom with 22 children and take a portion of that teacher and say it goes to one student or another student. I mean, it's a lot more than just going in and looking at your cost per student, which is what's on that actual report, I think you're referencing.
I agree, but the EDLO-1 tracks special ed costs down to a very detailed, at a very detailed level. And we have a disproportionate number of students coming in who require special services. They have IEPs. So there's absolutely a cost that's sitting in the system right now that can be identified immediately for at least a subset of these kids. Those are the costs that we've not been reimbursed for. We know that we have two that we get reimbursed for. So we are definitely incurring costs. The plan in here now takes another 18 students this year and next year for a total of 36. You take that disproportional number of added cases, and you know you're going to have a disproportionate number of kids needing extra services. So put aside those in the regular classrooms, there are, there is a significant extra cost to the open-choice program. And unfortunately, I think a lot of the numbers are, at least a base set of numbers is probably pretty easily achieved. And I'm not sure why we're not seeing them. The Board of Finance has asked for it twice. And I guess the other question is, so if the state cuts our funding, I think Chairman Dwyer said to the Board of Finance that we would not open up seats. Is that correct?
For pre-K?
For open choice.
Right.
I said that if the state does not give us funding to expand open choice, it would be impossible for us to expand open choice.
Can you define what you mean gives us funding to expand, please?
Currently, we get $3,000 per student.
Correct. So what are you saying? If we don't get $3,000, we're not going to help expand it?
I think I just answered what we're saying. If the state does not give us the money to provide for open-choice students, it would be very difficult, if not impossible, for us to actually bring in more students.
So are you saying zero? Are you saying a reduction of 3,000?
I can't answer it any different, Mr. Llewellyn.
No, you actually can. So if it's cut to 2,000, are we going to expand the seats?
I can't answer what-if in conjecture questions.
Because you know the answer is yes. You intend to.
That's not the answer I gave, Mr.
No, it's not rude. It's not rude. The Board of Finance was pretty clear that if the funding's not there, we probably shouldn't be expanding these seats.
Mr. Llewellyn, I answered one specific question.
It's an affordability question here.
Mr. Llewellyn, I answered one specific question. If we are not given $3,000 per student, it would be difficult for us, if not impossible, to bring in new students.
Okay, so anything less than 3,000?
The conjecture on the other what-ifs, I did not address.
And I'm asking what your view of that is right now?
I don't have one at the moment.
Of course not. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
First, I know we're looking at the amendment, but I just want to be clear. On page one, I assume that that was a typo, and I guess if this was like this before, we all missed it before, on January 4th, 2017, not 2016? Page one, under April 2017 update, am I correct?
Correct. I think you're probably correct, yes.
Okay. Minor detail, but not. Then a few other questions. On page 10, about two-thirds of the way down, 2.0 pre-kindergarten focus, evaluate impact to racial imbalance. I'm unclear on what we could possibly be gleaning on, on or before January of 2018, since at that point, well, I guess we would know by then of this year's pre-K had many, but that's not intended to examine next year's pre-K? Or is that asking them to already make their request regarding staying at Burr, Stratfield?
Yeah, this is to really look at where are the numbers coming in in September? And so once we know what our enrollment is, and then being able to look at, has that had an impact moving and shifting that program?
That's the program that you're shifting from?
Dwight.
Dwight to Stratfield. And what is the impact of whether we hit the numbers we projected?
Right, but the only, the only numbers that would matter would be if they then stayed in the system? Am I correct? That if they not only were pre-K at their previous school, but then stayed with the kindergarten? Well, Dwight actually had lower enrollment than we would have, we would have liked to have seen in the pre-K program. Believing that perhaps that is where it's located farther away.
Right.
So that's what we're really going to be looking at in the fall, is does relocating that program actually increase the enrollment in pre-K because of the proximity to McKinley in that area?
No, I apologize if I'm not phrasing this clearly. I definitely understand that. Obviously, we do want to see that those numbers go up. I'm talking about how it would be impacting racial imbalance. As of January 2018, don't we have to wait until we see, okay, did this year of pre-K result in a transfer? That's my question of the, regarding January 2018.
Yeah, in January 2018, we're really looking to see, shifting the program, did we get more enrollment than we had anticipated?
Okay.
Yes.
And you're correct. We won't know the official answer, we won't know the official answer from the state until that spring, but our staff have been reasonably good at saying, based on the shifts that have occurred in Stratfield, did that help us or not? But you're correct, it won't be until the spring that the official number is issued by the state.
Okay, I mean, my only, it wasn't the analysis I was questioning, it was the time, you know, selecting January 2018 as the date, that was my question. On the next page, page 11, second up from the bottom, and there we have it, again in June of, again, 3.0 open choice, the analyzing impact to racial imbalance. What is it that we're looking at that's a different, wait, open choice? Oh, I apologize. Once again, I'm questioning, because this is now open choice, the impact to racial imbalance. Why June 2018? Wouldn't we have our October numbers or even the official April numbers?
We would, and part of, part of this timeline, we can either push it out to 19 to really analyze the data, but we're trying to make sure we have checkpoints along the way. So when we get to June of 18, we're going to look at all the data that we have, and we're probably going to then turn around and set a new target date of June of 2019, because it needs to be an ongoing. But I don't think if I put everything in here at 2019, that it would go across well with the Board of Education.
The State Board of Education.
Right.
And then on the last page, at the top, the surveying the community on redistricting options. And again, my marks on, when I was editing or writing my comments, were thinking that was the date. I wasn't thinking of on or before. But having served on the Cultural Diversity Task Force, I just would like to share that June is a wretched time to do surveys. Our response rate was so, I mean, we got definitive data, but just the numbers, I mean, we were not statisticians or data experts, but I'm fairly certain we did not have a scientifically significant return number to say that these were reliable. So again, I would hope that we would not be doing that in June of 2018, but again, that's where I wrote the comment. And then, my last question was on the very last one, the one of waiting for June 2019 for technical assistance from the Connecticut State Board of, because that's part of the state statute that they have to offer that. I was wondering why we would be waiting that long?
Yeah, let me just say that everything that's in this plan is on or before, which means that we're working on it now. And we'll be, it basically gives us until 2019 to continue to look at magnet or other program options. And we have already engaged the state, and we'll continue to do so. And part of their letter follow-up is we're supposed to have a monthly phone call even right now.
Okay. And that explains the far-right, that explains that far-right column, then.
That's right, right.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Mr. Llewellyn?
On page seven at the top, under redistricting, number two, can we get corrected numbers in the cost? Because this is, this is part of the additional step. So this is a part I think we should change to make it at least accurate. We know that Holland Hill is not going to be $15 million.
Yeah, let me just say, the additional steps, that section five was in the previous plan that the Board approved. And so we did not change anything that was already approved by the Board. And all we've added is the benchmark planning going forward. But if they were to ask us to rewrite an entire plan, we would have to go back and look at all of this. But that was actually already approved by the State Board.
The Board, the Board is going to be approving this document? This Board is going to be approving this document again at the next meeting, correct?
Right, yeah, you're really approving that section six, which, because the plan was approved with the condition that we add the benchmark planning, which starts on that page seven, with section six. And all of that is new.
Okay, yeah, I just think if we're going to resubmit a document, it might as well have correct figures. I mean, at one point in time, I'm not sure at what point in time it was ever 15, but I think it should have, at least reflect the correct numbers, because as the State Board, even if you want to put them in parentheticals, you know, currently estimated to be, you know, we are spending a lot of Fairfield's money to expand schools, to add to the already, you know, significant number of empty seats we have at the elementary level. And I think that the state likes that, because I think the state wants us to, you know, take in more kids. You know, I'm not sure what's going to happen with reimbursement rates as they drop. And I know we're, what, are we close to 10 points below what we thought for Riverfield? Where'd I get 20 instead of 29 or 27 on the actual reimbursement? So people might as well understand, the document might as well stand on its own as opposed to being kind of a part of time, or put in parentheticals what the date is, because I think it misrepresents what the true cost is.
Thank you. Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
Just to follow up on that point, is the state expecting that we are doing anything but approving and amended? So that, to do that would be not what the state, I definitely hear Mr. Llewellyn's point of wanting to be accurate, and if they ask- point of wanting to be accurate, and if they ask us to update it, of course, we would want to have the accurate numbers there. But my understanding is, we have a new section, and that and that alone is what we should be touching at all?
Do you have a copy of the letter you can read of what they've asked for?
You know what, I actually don't have it with me tonight. I'm sorry about that. I don't know if Mr. Cummings brought it.
But I think Mrs. Maxon Caneli's comment is, in essence, correct, that the state gave us conditional approval on the plan as submitted and asked us to add the timeline. So I think, in essence, she is correct.
Well, when the plan was submitted in January, the number was incorrect then as well. So I think we should actually have a proper record rather than an incorrect record, even if that means adding parentheticals.
And until the RTM acts, and there is a final budget made, for all intents purposes, whatever number we put in there will be inaccurate based on the next building committee meeting. And so, yes, we could put in a number, but, you know, until the RTM actually acts, we do not have a number, and the Holland Hill Building Committee is not yet publicly endorsed, and this is the number they're recommending. So at the moment, they're still in the design and value engineering stage, and the number is fluid.
Well, let's hope they get it to 15 then. Thank you.
Other comments or questions from board members? Ms. Carnell?
I guess, you know, the 15 million is clearly an issue, but I think the dates are wrong in paragraph two as well, because it says completion expected by the fall of 2018. I think we're starting the project in 2018. Which I'm sure won't allow us to start the Mill Hill project in 2018. So we're talking about adding 120 students. That number's not correct. Or not by the timeline.
So we'll check the timeline that the Holland Hill Building Committee is working on, whether it's fall of 18 or fall of 19.
To start it?
No, no. This sentence has, with completion expected by.
Right.
So I assume that we'd want to check the completion date that they're aiming at.
What is the start date? Isn't it 2018?
Is that, if you want to direct that question through the superintendent to perhaps, dare I say, Mr. Cullen?
Okay. Through the chair to Mr. Cullen? Through the chair and Dr. Jones to Mr. Cullen? Whoever wants else being on the list? I'm just, no, I know the date's been changed.
I believe before the building committee was on board, we were looking for the project to start this summer, which would have been 2017.
But that's an answer, when are we? We're starting in 2017?
The building committee hasn't announced that.
The only date that the building committee is definitively working toward is to getting all town approvals and submit the plan to the state by June of this year.
That's correct.
And how much time it will take them to get from there to bid documents and out to bid is not a timeline that they've set yet.
So historically, as Chairman Dwyer has referenced past practice, how long will it take from June 2017 for the project to be completed?
I would only be guessing.
Okay, I'll take it. That's more than I know.
Three to five years.
Okay, so then how can we talk about a Mill Hill project starting between 18 and 20? It just, you know, and then, I think what I'm trying to get to is, we're talking about expanding the capacity of these schools by 120, but that's not going to be on the date we're talking about.
Mill Hill's project on the waterfall, as far as starting, would be to receive approval for funding the consultants and the project team and the kickoff of a building committee.
Would be when? During the project at Holland Hill?
Yes, it would be during the project at Holland Hill.
So are you saying that there's a good possibility that the Mill Hill will finish by 2020, or a slim, you know, a slim possibility?
I would say that's slim.
Okay, so again, I guess I'm just trying to get to the point that we're probably not going to have an additional 120 seats by 2020? Or it won't have room for 120 students? Through the chair to Dr. Jones, am I correct in what the timeline I'm thinking about?
I think you are correct, and I do think that, you know, with building projects, you don't ever know exactly when they're going to finish. And so, when this plan was put together and it was voted on by the board earlier this year, it was with all the information we had at that point in time. And it would be very difficult to keep going back and having the board revise, revise, submit to the state board when they haven't asked us to do that. And so, we did not want to change anything that was originally approved by the board and approved by the board, by the Connecticut State Board, only providing what they've asked us to do, which was that benchmark planning.
Other questions or comments from board members? I'm sorry, Ms. Carnell, were you finished?
I'm fine, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none, the superintendent will take under advisement the comments that were made, and we will put this on the April 6 regular meeting agenda for action. Thank you very much. So I think we're up to item 4B, the first reading of policies, and there are two there. I'll defer to the chair of the policy committee.
I will reiterate my previous line, which is, I think this is fairly straightforward. If you have any questions, I, as always, look forward to them.
Mrs. Gerber?
Yeah, I guess the question I had with the enclosure number two, the first policy, the directory information?
Mm-hmm.
So is there anything new in this? I'm just a little confused, because normally if there's some new language, it's, you know, bold places or things are crossed out, and there doesn't seem to be any new language here that I saw. So I was just curious what was different.
Yeah, and I don't want to do that off the top of my head. I know, because we made some, there was not only, we started with some new language, but we also made some additions after that, so I will get that to you.
Great, thank you.
Sad of, Mr. Llewellyn?
A couple of questions here. We have four categories, student name, address, telephone, and parent guardian email address as the information that can be released. Is that the whole sum of what can be released? Or are there other items?
This is the directory information, so that when, as for the rest of the policy, when it refers to information that can be released to different groups, for example, military recruiters, for example, vocational, magnet programs, et cetera, this is the directory information being referenced.
Okay, so when recruiters call, for example, year of graduation is probably something that we might need to know, because there's the whole concept of implicit disclosure. And the implicit disclosure is kind of providing a list of a subset of the data.
Mm-hmm.
That by definition could potentially violate FERPA. So we should probably think about what the universe of items is and put it on here. Otherwise, you can't give that list of seniors, because, you know, that's not something you disclose. So, you know, other items that go on here would be graduation dates of attendance, and other ones that are kind of officially recognized, or things like sports or activities, so members of a sports team. So I think those were the other three that might want to be included there, or at least discussed, because otherwise we're hampering ourselves to be able to actually give that information on a subset basis because of the implicit disclosure.
Okay, and some of this had also been covered in our previous policy, but let me get more information on that, and I'll speak to it next meeting.
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions for the chair of the policy committee? Any comments and other policy committee meeting members wish to make? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 4C, discussion of 17, 18 budget changes. The superintendent will be handing out a sheet shortly, and perhaps as that is happening, I'll make a couple of comments. Under normal circumstances, we wait until all town bodies have acted before we look at potential changes to the budget based on the final action. Clearly, the governor's proposal, as well as the first selectmen's proposal to reduce the education budget by $2 million, gives us a 4.3 million approximate target. I have full faith and confidence, since this is the week of St. Patrick's Day, that the town is going to give us all of that money back. But that's not going to happen. And because of the magnitude of the cut that we're looking at, the board felt, and the superintendent felt, that we should take an earlier look at it and share it with the community and related officials as to what this means to the education department. This board voted 9-0 in support of the current budget. None of us up here are happy with the idea that we may have to make these very difficult decisions. We'll take a first look at it tonight. We'll be probably talking about it in April and May, and pending final legislative action up in Hartford, then make a final decision that we are required to make in time for the July 1 fiscal year start. And so, for those of you who may gasp, please know that these are just suggestions at the moment. Some of them are likely suggestions that we'll have to act on, and others will be pending board discussion as to what seems to be reasonable. So with that as our opening comment, I'll ask Dr. Jones to lead us through the document.
Well, first of all, you know, just as a reminder, down on the very bottom, I talked about this at the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen meeting, where our reduction is ranging between 4.2 and 6.2, if nothing changed, from the first selectmen's $2 million reduction, and then the other additional $4 million that is being reduced through the governor's budget. So it's a huge number for us. We brought a very lean budget this year and did a lot of work to do that before we ever moved it forward. So what you're looking at here are the tier one and tier two, just the first pass-through, and again, these are just, as we were working with staff, going through the budget, we've met with all of our different principal level groups, all of our directors. We have a lot more meeting to take place, and there are no great options. In tier one, what you're looking at is the homebound instruction. That was actually tied to legislation at the state level, which, everything that we know right now, we believe is going to go away, as far as for students who are expelled. And we had built in a little bit of extra money there for additional tutoring hours. And again, it's a little bit of a gamble, but right now, we've put it on this list just because we understand it may go away. We are looking at taking one bus out of the budget. We are going to try to run our buses a little bit differently next year, hopefully at 80% capacity. And that's going to be a real challenge for us with our route, but we know that we need to do that. The 2.0 PE position, and it says high school there simply because that's where we have more of our staff. That's a position where we have two openings in the district right now. So it means that we need to shuffle staff in order to make that work, but it does keep everybody in a position, but it's reprogramming the staff. Looking at programming supplies, obviously, the tennis court projects that are both of our high schools, you'll see a lot of capital projects in this tier one. And again, this is kind of kicking the can down the road. Nobody likes to do this, because these are all projects that we know, they were in our budget for a reason, and we need these things done. Looking at preventative maintenance, painting, general painting that happens in the summer. Looking at playground, we have some rubberized playground surface at ECC that we really want to get replaced this summer, but we've pulled that out, again, this first pass-through. We had a project at Mill Hill that had to do with some flooring. We have a pre-K playground at Stratfield. We were just talking about moving that pre-K program. We wanted to put in a more permanent structure, but now with this, it means it would be a structure that's more temporary for a year or two. We make sure that we have preschool equipment, but it's not equipment that's going to last 25 years. And technical consultants. When we take all of those, a lot of just projects and the bus, it's 1.3 million. So we're still a long ways from getting to between four and six. When you get into tier two is when it starts getting more, I would say, more difficult, the things that make us all feel even more so uncomfortable. And the first one is a student activity fee. Now, this is something that, you know, would need a lot of discussion. Is this an activity fee that's middle school, high school? Is it just high school? This number was calculated on the athletics fee with intent that this would be an activity fee, so it would reach farther than that. But we wanted a real number to calculate, to at least have some guidance for what we could reduce, that we knew was a solid number. And this was based on the number of students that were participating in athletics currently, so that we were utilizing real numbers. Increasing our building rentals, we don't get a tremendous amount by doing that. We don't want to increase it so high that we, in fact, hurt by losing renters. The world language program at elementary, this is a big one, and I know this would be one that the board has really worked to get world language back in elementary, but as we've talked about world language, it's not that nobody values it, but we're really struggling to fund it right now. And at 25 minutes twice a week, it's not having the programmatic impact that we would really like to see when we start looking at $360,000 and being able to keep teachers in the classroom. Fourth grade orchestra, this is another one that's very difficult to have on here. But again, it's looking at, is there anywhere, if we delay one year of our kids starting in fifth grade, you know, will that have a huge impact? It's not something, again, that we like having on here. No summer curriculum work. Obviously, we're trying to cut out everything we can that doesn't have to do with people. District professional development, an allocation reduction for all of our supplies and materials, this again is incredibly challenging. We've already done that, and we've done that more than once. Looking at the district improvement plan and really saying, we have some things we're just not going to be able to implement right now, not if we truly are facing $4 to $6 million reduction. The aquatics program, we know that, again, this is one that the community's had and discussed in the past, but it comes up over and over, because it does have an expense to it, and it is also the staff time. And it's a tough program for us to continue to run. Also, freezing a secondary administration position at central office. And we do have two open positions we will have at the end of this year, and freezing one of those so that we don't fill that. So those are kind of tier one, tier two, and you can see tier two is getting really tough. Now, as we start talking about tier three, right now, you don't have that in front of you, because we're nowhere there yet, but just to give you an idea of some of the community discussion, I was at a PTA meeting on Monday night, where people were sharing some thoughts and ideas. Obviously, we all get emails, and people have ideas, so some of the things that have come up are not easy discussions. Music lesson fees, which that happens all the way to K-12. Looking at working with our bargaining units. Is there any way that we could do a furlough day or something like that for staff, which means we have one day, basically, where we just close school? Looking at closing, and this one was really, I've heard this more than once, closing an elementary site. That even came up at the PTA meeting on Monday night. Consolidating to one high school. And that's one, I have heard all of the stories from when the community's gone through this in the past, that's a hard one to even think about. The health system, structure, obviously, that comes up in the community. Looking at the gifted program, K-8, and what staffing is allotted there. Looking at secretarial staff at the different levels, like middle school. Dean reduction of days is another thing that's come up. Looking at council reduction in days. Relocating Walter Fitzgerald Center. Relocating central office to a school site. If you close one school, do you move central office out, and is it cost-effective to do that? No ninth grade sports came up from the community. Also, looking at changing to a half-day kindergarten instead of full day. And I don't think you'll find anybody at central office that thinks that's a great idea. But you're hearing that right now in other communities around us, and I think that's why it's on our list. Eliminating curriculum leaders. Again, that's something I think that was on the list many years ago that emerges, but somebody has to be in the trenches to do the work, and I think it's going to be, it's going to be a real challenge as we start to explore these. But I also just want to mention a couple of other things, because when I was in front of the Board of Finance, you know, I kind of gave an example that our staff, if you go out and you listen to them- go out and you listen to them, they will tell you that they have reduced, and they have reduced, and they have reduced. And I gave an example that's kind of like a rubber band that you stretch and stretch and stretch, and eventually, it breaks. And when you are out listening to our teachers, it's very, very difficult right now, and I think we need to acknowledge that. We need to do everything we can to make sure that we are not making jobs more stressful, more difficult for our staff. And, you know, this is a very quick list, just from trying to pick the brain of a few people who've been here for a while, but many years ago, we had parays in first and second grade. We had world language in elementary was three days a week. We had gifted education positions that were cut that we've never been able to restore. We had smaller class sizes at one time in all of our elementaries. We had central office clerical. We had clerical at our high schools. We had high school receptionists that are no longer there. We've reduced parayees across the district. We had 10 and 1/2 reduced days for people in our district, just trying to find cost-savings a few years ago. We have reduced the computer parays at high school, library parays at high school, and I just want to remind us of those because once we reduce things, we don't get them back. And we are facing a very, very challenging budget, and I know we'll need a lot of input, and it's going to be hard decisions if we truly are faced with 4 to 6 million dollars.
Okay. We talk about programs, and we talk about money that might be saved. I think everybody in this room knows, we're talking about human beings, both at the staff level and student and service to parents, and so none of these suggestions are made lightly. Some of these suggestions, I suspect, will not move forward, but it's not easy finding the amount of money that we need. So I thank the superintendent for giving us some initial thoughts. I won't even call them her thoughts because I doubt that she would say I'm recommending each one of these items. Comments from the board or questions from the board? Mr. Calabrese.
I'll kick it off. All right, so even with the Tier 1 ideas and the Tier 2 ideas, we are still short 1.2 million dollars.
That's correct.
Just wanted to clarify that.
Let me expand on that just a little bit for members of the public who may say, well, how do you get to the 4.25 million? The state government has made a change in the way they're looking at reimbursing us for residential costs, the room and board side of outplaced students. We anticipate that will be costing us an additional $1 million next year if they go through with that. They reduced our grant for special education by 1,250,000. And then the first selectman reduced our budget by 2 million. So when you add the 2 plus the 1.0 plus the 1.25, that's how you get to the minimum budget cut of 4,250,000. The additional money that is looked at is that they actually reduced our special education excess cost grant to zero, and then they allocated a special education grant to the town side of the budget. In discussion with the Board of Finance, it is the Board of Finance's, it's the first selectman's recommendation, and I think the Board of Finance agrees with it, that since it is money being sent to us for special education, although it's being sent to the town, they intend on transferring it to us. If for some reason the town decided not to do that, that's what gets us to the extra 2 million that gets us to the 6.25. So that you understand where the numbers come from and how we got to the 4.2 to the 6.2 range that we're talking about at the moment. Questions or comments from the board? Mr. Llewellyn.
Could you actually talk about the $9 million that Governor Malloy wants to put back to the town? Is that, that relates to teacher pension? Is that coming to Board of Ed, or is that going to the town side?
The first selectman in putting his budget together believed it was responsible to take that into account, but he decided that the 9.0 million teacher pension cost would be carried on the town side. Whether that, if it ever materialized, and I'm sure we all have our contacts with people up in Hartford, I have not met a single legislator who says I'm supporting that pension transfer. Nonetheless, that's what is in the budget at the moment for the governor. And so if it doesn't come to pass, then the town will look at, how do they adjust the budget accordingly? So it's within, and that's what caused the first selectman to say, so I can absorb 7 million of it on my side, I need to get 2 million out of your side of the budget. I'm sure it's a little bit more complicated math than that, but in essence. And so, a lot will be determined once the legislative acts as to what happens to that 9.0, and depending on what happens to that 9.0, both the superintendent and I asked, or maybe we commented at the Board of Finance meeting, that just as you were asking us to share in the pain of absorbing that, we hope that if it doesn't come to pass, we'll share in the gain, and some money will be restored to our budget because it was taken out of our budget because of that. It's a fluid situation, so I think that's the best I understand it, unless, Dr. Jones, you have any comments that you want to make?
Yeah.
Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. And have there been any comments as to the fact that it's actually a state obligation and not a town, and why they're pushing it down to the towns?
The--
Or if we actually have an obligation to pay it?
Yeah, there are different groups in Connecticut. One is called the Small Communities Consortium, or something like that. I read in the newspaper recently whether they are gathering together to make a claim that the state can't legally impose that on a town for various reasons that their lawyers have figured out. Where that claim will go, who knows? So there is a healthy debate in the state, not only among the legislature, but among various towns, both Boards of Education and town governments, to oppose that.
Okay, thank you. So, but that 9 is kind of implicitly baked into the 4 to 6 range here because of the 2 million taken out by the town?
Correct. It's baked into the town budget--
Correct.
--which includes our--
By the first selectman, that's correct.
Correct.
So that way, there's not a chance of losing additional money. Well, there is always a chance with him up there in Hartford, but--
So, okay. Thank you for that revised statement. Ms. Pitco.
I have more of a comment than I do a question. We've gotten numerous emails lately, people advocating, and I appreciate them. I've been to the Board of Finance meetings, I've been to the Board of Selectment meetings, and I want to just say that these are more than numbers. You know, being an educator, I know what it means to get rid of, you know, 10% of school allocation reduction in supplies. I'm a teacher. So please know that I'm having heart palpitations right now at thinking about what this means.
I think several of us that are on the email chains from citizens who send in emails to their elected public officials know that in the last couple of years, when the tax increase has been down in the 1% range, the number of emails that we've received is not that much. This year, when we're talking about the tax increase that is projected in the current first selectman's budget, the number of emails have picked up. I can only encourage all citizens, no matter what side of the question you're on, to make sure that you send emails in to your elected public officials so that the sentiments registered by us and Ms. Pitco specifically are known by those who will actually make the decision. Comments? Mrs. Gerber.
Well, I guess one thing I just wanted to mention because, you know, with all of the emails that we've been getting from members of the public who are concerned about a 4.48 tax increase, you know, if you really wanted to be very glass-half-empty about it, I know we've yet to meet anyone in the state of Connecticut other than the governor who believes that a $9 million pension bill to our town is a good idea. However, you know, stranger things have happened, and worst-case scenario, if that money was baked into our budget and did not come out, there certainly is a sentiment, at least of certain members of the public, that additional cuts would need to be made because a 4.48 tax increase with that $9 million in our budget would be untenable. So theoretically, if nothing changed, perhaps the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, or RTM could at some point, if the needle isn't budging and we still have this $9 million in our budget, they could decide to cut more. Is, I mean, that is a possibility. I know it's hopefully a very vague possibility because it's bad enough as it is, but just to be clear, you know, there are a lot of people who believe that 4.48 tax increase is too high. So if nothing changes with that $9 million, there could be a sentiment of the other town bodies to say, we agree, 4.48 is too high, we need to cut more. Now, they could choose to cut it from the town, although I don't know where, or they could choose to cut it from us, or both. So we could potentially be looking at even more cuts at some point between now and May 1st, if nothing changes with that $9 million number. So that's--
I believe your analysis is absolutely correct, but the risk of causing Mrs. Pitco further sleepless nights, there is a sentiment in this town that suggests that perhaps the Board of Education budget is a big number, and so therefore, we'll just take something off of it because of the desire to limit the tax increase. We are, we have always been an easy target, and that has been unsettling for all of us. Other comments from board members? Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
Several things, and I'm not prepared to do this math, and I don't, but if that 9 million, I mean, First Selectman Tetro did have the option of saying, I don't want to use the phrase gambling, because everything I've heard is, mirrors what Mr. Dwyer's heard, which is that that's not going to happen, between the lawsuit and the lack of support in legislation, in the legislature. So if that 9 million, if we say, no, we're going to assume that that's not going to happen, that alone, I mean, isn't that a decision that the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance can make to put that back into the budget as an allowance for, we don't believe that this is going to happen, and so we're not going to take this overly conservative approach, we're going to take the approach involved, you know, that would stipulate that that's not going to happen? I just want to clarify that I'm correct in terms of, of all the things that the public can advocate for, one can be that, restore that 9 million. Every sign out there indicates that that is, again, gamble, you know, notice on that, but that that was a choice, and we did not, the budget did not have to be done that way, and the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance could choose to put 9 million back in the budget with the idea of not, no, am I saying that right? But the idea being--
The answer is yes.
--of reducing the 4.5 is what I'm very inarticulately getting at.
So the, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So the town of Westport, I know, and the town of Greenwich, I know, chose exactly that path, that they would not budget for their share of the pension costs. Both of them have talked about, and if that comes to pass, we'll deal with it on a special assessment basis, but that we don't think it's going to come to pass, so we're not going to do a budget that assumes that. As soon as the governor's budget came out, an email chain among chairs of Board of Education that we use from time to time to say, so what do you know, and do you have a thought on this, asked, how is your town dealing with it? And I, with the exception of our town, I did not see anybody of the 18 towns that responded to that email chain indicating that their town was calculating it as baked in their budget. And so we are an outlier in that respect. And yes, the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance could put that money back in. Once it gets to the RTM, the only thing that can be put back in our budget would be the 2.0, because the other is the governor's side, is the 2.0 that was reduced, subject to any other reductions, but that would have to happen by a 2/3 vote of the RTM. The RTM generally is only allowed to further reduce budgets. Does that answer your question?
It does. And I, that, in terms of the, and I know I'm, look, there's a reason I'm on the Board of Education, not the Board of Finance, so I'm not, I don't understand the accounting exactly of how that would work. I just know that that was a very, very, and I'm not saying not well-founded, you know, in terms of being very, very conservative, it's just an approach I'm not sure I agree with. And then regarding that 2 million, because that, to me, would be a real accounting injustice if that was not credited to the Board of Ed side, that, again, I'm just thinking of the things that the public can advocate for, ensuring that that 2 million is being paid attention to and that that should not be spent. I mean, I was talking with a principal in Ansonia who describes fighting every year because the special ed money gets attributed to the town side of the budget and is spent on, and not that it's not a worthwhile expenditure to get police cruisers and what have you, but then their budget faces that shortfall, and that it's very clearly a stipulated special ed, and that that 2 million needs to be on our side of the ledger.
Okay. So can I interrupt just one moment to clarify?
Sure. Because I did have some questions.
There are two rounded 2.0 million dollar numbers.
Yes.
The first 2.0 million is money the state is giving to the town and that we are assuming will be sent to us, and if it isn't, that's how we get from 4.2 million cut to 6.2 million dollar cut. In addition to that, there's another 2.0 that the first selectman reduced our budget by. So in terms of advocacy, making sure that the 2.0 and special education money comes to us, and that the 2.0 cut is restored, those would be two different advocacy points for two different numbers, but they're the same actual number.
Right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. Again, that's, it's important that that be clarified. We're reading about this so much that if, we can't assume that everybody else is keeping this straight. A couple of questions about some of the items on the list. For example, the 2.0 PE position at the high school, that was something I'd brought up three or four years ago, the idea, and now apparently, it's actually being considered at the state level, the idea of counting sports as PE, as the PE credits that are, of course, state mandated. Is this in line with that, or is that simply keeping the same PE requirements, just somehow doing something different with staff?
Yeah, let me just say this is first pass-through, so certainly, all of those discussions will take place, and we will look at all options, and that is one of them, is looking at, is there a way to do that, and not only to do it, but to manage, just manage the scheduling and everything else that comes along with that? Or is it just utilizing the master schedule a little bit differently and shuffling two positions to cover the two openings we have right now at elementary?
Okay. Hold on, go down. Down with the maintenance preventative systems and painting. I know what a difference painting can make, I'm not sure what the systems make, but I see preventative, and I get very nervous. And I just wonder if you could clarify, or through you to staff, clarify exactly what that preventative was geared toward again?
Right, and I'll ask Mr. Cullen to come forward. He has a big chart and has worked hard on this with us.
So this line item, we've tabulated five, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 areas. So the painting one's the easiest. We budget about $150,000 for painting across the district. We were taking $100,000 off of this, so it was going to leave us $50,000. The preventative side is under two areas. Our roof preventive maintenance program is actually showing us signs of improvement with all the new roofs and the work we're doing. The contractor that's got that award and the monitoring we've been doing has told us we could probably cut that back by 10,000 or 15,000 off of that, so we were able to take that savings. The other one is under building envelope PM. Building envelope PM is running about $20,000 to $30,000 a year, and then the bulk of the remaining of the money is for all the repairs and fixes, and we can manage those so we can pick and choose which ones we do and cut back a little bit with a budget cut like this. So we took a little bit there, it was $40,000. The other items are under ADA studies and fixes. We have $30,000 a year to look at our schools and see where we can improve ramps for sidewalk entrance areas, handicap parking, signage, staff that come to us that have new handicap needs, and we manage those annually, so we're able to take some savings there and still leave a little bit for the rest of the district. The other item is under maintenance code and safety systems. This is where we've been doing a lot of keys and hardware and locks and devices for a lot of the doors. lot of the doors. We've been getting caught up with a lot of that, and we were saying that we could maybe push that off a year, since we've been doing that for about five years now, not, the whole district isn't finished, but it's something we can control and manage. So we took $75,000 off there. The last one is under HVAC system cleaning. We carry about $10,000 a year to do ductwork cleaning where a school might have gone through a large renovation program, such as all the window replacements, or the ceilings coming down. Anything that kicks up a lot of construction dust and dirt that could work its way, gravity way into the ductwork system, we try and go in during the summer and clean out that ductwork. So we were thinking Holland Hill probably isn't going to get started this year, the window job at Ludlow High School will, but we won't get in there in time to clean it. We thought we would cut back $10,000 on that, and then we also cut out $10,000 from that line item that we added in new, we're working with the IT department, we wanted to possibly start cleaning, professional cleaning of the IT and MDF closets in the schools that are lacking. Specialized cleaning that a company would come in and do, and they know how to work around circuit boards and devices. So we just thought we'd push that off a year rather than do something new. So that total came to the $275,000.
Okay.
Do you have other questions?
I do have other questions, but I'm happy to defer to Ms. Luellen.
To Ms. Luellen.
Thank you. The $30,000 for studies, is that the actual putting in of ramps in the things, or is that just studies?
It's both. It's working with an architect and engineer that we go out to bid with and does some drawings and specs, and then we go out to bid. Like this year, we're looking at Dwight. Dwight Elementary School has a very difficult entry, and we'd like to redo a portion of the sidewalk and rubber ice mat, and try and get a park handicap spot in.
That would be architectural fees in those studies, but not the actual physical putting in of a ramp?
No, it does.
It does, okay.
It doesn't include both.
Go ahead, Mrs. Maxon Canelli.
That's it for me for maintenance. Thank you, Mr. Cullen.
You're welcome.
Sorry, and I went right, right past the one bus reduction. Has, in terms of, and I know Mr. Vicki is the master at this, but I know one of the, a couple of emails I'd read, you know, suggested, or have put out the idea of playing with school start time at some of the schools, and that having some flexibility in that, could that improve the route efficiency? And again, I know saving a tier on a bus, I'd asked about this before, I think is only $2,000 to $3,000. I don't know if it's, but perhaps it could actually end up being a bus reduction as opposed to just adding a tier. Is that something that staff has looked at, or would be looking at?
In this first pass through, we have not, but I did see that on a list, so we will, we will look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Did you have some follow-up there?
Okay. The student activity fee, again, which I've many, many times spoken against, I can't stand it, in terms of the parent tax there, but would we get number, can we get numbers for what this would be, if it were a true activity fee, as well as broken down by, if it were high school only, high school and middle school, just to get the full picture of what would be involved there?
Yeah, and I think what would be really helpful for me, and maybe this is our April meeting or May meeting, is, I don't know, when we, when we're moving through the process, is that if the Board of Nine can really look at some of these items and say, yes, we want you to explore, and it's the will of a majority of the Board, and I say that because what you're getting right now are really good estimates based on what we know, but it takes hours to go and calculate that. So that's one of those that would take a lot of time, but if the Board really says, we want that number, and we really are willing to consider that because of the difficult budget we're dealing with, then we could go and do that work, and that would, and I say that that would be really helpful for us.
Then I will very quickly say that if it is not the will of the Board to get those additional numbers, I am not advocating for them.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. I was wondering if you could explain a little bit further about the district improvement plan program implementations, exactly what would not, would we not be moving forward with that's represented by this $147,000?
Oh goodness, I don't, actually don't have an itemized list in front of me, I don't know if Mr. Cummings, do you have anything with you on exactly where that number is? We'll have to get that back to you.
Okay, thank you. And the only other question, I'd had to, hold on, let me find my very carefully written out ideas. One thing that I had a question about was, we've been having the public meetings regarding the solar panels at the two high schools, which would come with utility savings, and I believe they were looking at using for this summer.
We're not quite there, yes. So one of the, one of the questions we have that's still hanging out is, when we put the solar into the parking lots, both high schools, what does it actually do to the paving cost? Does it actually increase the maintenance that we're going to need in the parking lot? And does that, does the savings from the solar actually offset that, or not?
Okay.
And so we still have some unanswered questions like that, that we want to be sure before we go and put such huge structures in a parking lot of both high schools, that it is actually economically a smart thing for us to do.
And of course, with the Ludlow paving having been cut by the other town bodies, that would also further complicate that issue.
And that's probably why we're being very cautious, because right now getting money for paving has not been easy for us. The other thing that, you know, has a little bit of concern is that in order to, if we have weather like we did this last week, it will take a lot more sand, and, and we've been told that the town will be willing to, you know, have that additional sanding for us, but without having that really kind of, not in writing, but where we have that assurance that we're also not going to be taking on an additional expense for that.
Okay. All right, that was the one, I have some other things, but I'll, I'll hold off on mentioning those, because I don't know, when the conversation is done, if there are other board members who have these, you know, I am curious about the path forward, because I very much hear your point of, if there isn't a majority interested in a number, we should not be sending staff, and it's not wild goose chases, there'll be, you know, questions, I assume, coming, you know, obviously from good intent, but, you know, I'll be curious what our process is going to be, so that it's not just a whim here and there, I'm curious what this costs. I mean, I don't want to hear the phrase, I'm curious, you know, this, this has to be, this is something I want to pursue, is there enough of an intent, you know, interest on the Board to follow that? Because otherwise, we could have the staff running ragged on this, never mind, oh, I don't know, we're supposed to be educating children, so, and helping staff, et cetera. So I don't know, to Dr. Jones or to Mr. Dwyer, what our path forward is from here, because we've never started this so early.
At the moment, while we have normally made a final, final budget adjustment decision at the end of May, I have in my own head thought of pushing that off to the June, I think it's 13, but I don't have the exact date, meeting, so that we have the best available information from the state, even though the state may not have acted. And so I'm assuming that we will have another discussion of this topic in April, which might be able to give that kind of guidance as to what we're willing to look at and not, and then allow May to be the time for the superintendent to really hone in on the exact numbers. And of course, by the beginning of May, we'll have the final decision made by the RTM. Under normal circumstances, like within five days of the RTM vote, we have been hearing the superintendent's recommendations. I think we have to allow more time between the RTM vote, beginning of May, first, like the May 2nd or so, and when the superintendent gives us their recommendations. So at the moment, that's all I've thought about, another discussion in April, May for research, and, and then present the initial ideas in May, and vote in June. Let me, are you finished, Mrs. Maxon Canelli? Ms. Pitco.
Mr. Dwyer, we are at the Board of Selectmen Joint Board of Finance meeting, help me clarify, were they going to try to delay their votes? I know the Board of Selectmen was due to vote on our budget March 28th, and the Board of Finance, March 30th. Have you heard anything about them trying to delay the vote on our budget?
I think the subject came up as a result of the governor proposing for two CCM Conference of something mayors, that could the state take action that would allow towns to delay their budget vote? I didn't get any indication from people in that room that they thought that such a state action could essentially void our charter requirement, which is quite specific, that leads to the beginning of May. So, so the comment was made, but I don't think there was any, honestly, I don't remember any discussion that suggested they were warmed to the idea. Dr. Jones, do you recall the conversation, or who else was at the meeting? Anybody else who was at the meeting recall, anything beyond that? So I, I think it's just a concept that the governor made to cause people to overcome the, we've had to vote on our budget before you vote on your budget, and that's not fair.
I have one more question.
Yep.
Actually, to Dr. Jones, or to one of her staff that can answer, can we be more specific on what the aquatics program is, K to 12? I don't want, you know, swimmers at the high school freaking out, they're not going to have a swim team or something.
Good evening, Andrea Leonardi, Director of Special Education. This is our integrated aquatics program, and let me start by saying, we, none of us think this is a good idea either, and this is, this is a program that serves students, some of our most vulnerable students with significant needs. It requires the rental of the pool at the YMCA on Mondays and Friday afternoons, and there is staffing that goes along with it. So this is a, it's the rental fee, some staffing, and obviously a pretty significant chunk of transportation to move the kids from any one of our 17 schools to the, to the Y. It's not a program that we would like to see lose, it's a wonderful program that meets the needs of, of these kids. The only reason it's on there is because there's potential that those same needs could be met if they stayed in their schools, and we just looked at it a little bit differently. It's not a pleasant thing to have on this list, but that's what it means, it's not, that's what the aquatics program is.
And this, this subject did come up in the, I think, 11, 12 budget discussions, and it generated a lot of community, community conversation. And so it was an idea that was put out there, but then the Board decided not to pursue it. Other questions from the Board? Mrs. Gerber, followed by Ms. Carnell, and then I'll go to Mr. Luellen.
Yeah, through the chair to Dr. Jones. I just was curious, the no summer curriculum work, what, if there was like one specific curriculum that you think would be impacted, or is it kind of spread out over a number of different ones, so there wouldn't be as much, you know, kind of pain felt moving forward? Like, how would this in any way impact the regular school year, I guess?
It's probably even a bigger, I think a bigger discussion, in that basically it means we do zero. I mean, not any curriculum area at all, but we're also looking at our calendar going into next year, and if we truly are going to have to reduce, you know, all of these aspects, how can we, for, for instance, put some early releases in the calendar, so that we can still do some curriculum work and professional development, and still give our teachers what they need, without having the same cost that we see in the summer?
Thank you. And then one question, comment, and I was taking this in really quickly, the, the tier three, the really unpleasant ones. One thing I don't think I saw in there, which I know people have mentioned to me as a cause for concern, which has come up multiple times since my now college-age student was in kindergarten, is increasing elementary school class sizes. So is that something that is really kind of like an absolute last resort? I mean, it's, it's not anything that I am advocating for whatsoever, but again, it's just something, as soon as you hear budget cuts, you hear parents being concerned that this is going to impact the class sizes, and so I just was, if that's come up in discussion preliminarily, or?
It has come up in discussion, I think it's, if, if we really are facing between four and six million, we have no contingency in the budget, and we have enrollment, our class sizes will go up, in order, even doing all of these other things slightly. And I think it will be, at what point in time do you actually add the teacher? You know, it's the first day of school, we're not going to do that anymore in September and October. The flip side to that is, and especially when I look at our elementary classrooms, depending on the building, some of the rooms are very small. They are not large rooms, they're not rooms that are, were built to have 25 or 26 children in them, so you have to be mindful of that as well. So it'll be a big discussion as we get into this budget, to really look at how best to handle that.
Thank you.
So it's on the list, but I don't know how you not put it on the list when you're talking about closing an elementary site, or consolidating the one high school, perhaps class size belongs in the same category as, as those two. Ms. Carnell.
Through the chair to Dr. Jones, can you just explain on 301 homebound instruction?
That's some legislation this year that we don't believe is going to actually hold, and it has to do with the number of hours that, if a student, for instance, is expelled, that they need to have the same number of hours as a full-time student, which means very expensive tutoring for a lot of hours in comparison to what we would usually do.
That's online you're talking about, because we have that online system. You're both shaking your heads. I know, right, that's what I was wondering, will this affect the online as well, and will it affect students that are ill for, you know, extended periods of work from home?
Well, this $50,000 really will not have an impact if the legislation doesn't hold true. If the legislation holds true, we'll have to come back and reevaluate it. This one is a little bit of a gamble to have on here.
Okay. I guess, next thing you had was maintenance and technical consultants, what do they typically cover?
Yes, this, this line item is about $100,000 annually. It covers smaller projects that will require architectural engineering services to provide bid packages to go through the purchasing bidding process. It covers indoor air quality testing, consultants that come in, hazardous material testing, air clearance testing, a lot of those items.
Okay, thank you. Wait, before you go, while you're up here.
Sure.
Would you mind just, I know that tennis courts have been consistently something, are there different needs at each of the tennis courts? I'm sure there's a different amount, but the number one is half of the other number.
Yes. The first one, Ludlow High Schools, is just a repair. That would mean going and sealing all the present cracks and bad areas that are bubbling, and then recoding the whole surface of the tennis courts, and then relining it. The second item, we should have added to that, that that also includes the replacement of the irrigation system and pump house for the grass fields at Ward. The tennis court portion is the NAPS Highway tennis courts. I don't know if they're called the NAPS Highway tennis courts, but I labeled them the NAPS Highway tennis courts because they're the ones out by NAPS Highway. The Blake tennis courts in the back are the ones that were in our nonrecurring request for replacement. These are in poor shape as far as being, needing to be power washed and a few cracks and recoding done. That's only about $17,000. The rest of that money in there is the replacement of the irrigation system that's apparently existing for the grass fields at Ward High School. There's some issues with that irrigation system, breaking a lot, valves going, the pump house has given us a lot of trouble with the transformers. Also, we found out that the drinking fountains and the concession stand are on the same water lines, they should be separated also, that was that project.
Thank you. And just the last one, free secondary administration, I'm just wondering what you're referring...
Mr. Cullen, just before you leave, sometimes we talk about that this impacts program, and students, and staff, and it implies we're talking about teachers. This Board knows that your staff care deeply about the work that they do to maintain quality facilities, and we know that that also has a human impact when we can't do what we want to do to maintain facilities. So please pass on to your staff that we see them in the same light, that, that this impacts their lives and the work that they're able to do.
Yes, thank you very much.
Ms. Carnell.
I'm on another page.
Mr. Luellen.
One of the questions that I've been asked a couple of times to, to mention is, in terms of the revenue side or the activity fees, is it legal to charge a attendance fee, an activity fee, for some of the... activity fee, for some of the Bridgeport Magnet schools? So if we have students who are attending those, are we allowed to? Because it's almost an elective, charge some nominal fee?
I would be shocked if we were allowed to do that because the state of Connecticut gives us funding? Is that what you mean?
Well, the state is--
Are you talking about our magnets?
That we sent out.
Oh, the ones that we sent.
So in the budget, $600,000 of cost to the district. One of the questions, though, that I had, or, you know, I mentioned, and then I put to you guys is, and I know it was asked at the Board of Finance meeting, is, are those, like 268, 278, or some number that you had quoted the other night, are those included already in the high school numbers? Or are they not part of the Fairfield census?
That was a question asked at the Board of Finance. When you look at the student enrollment report, I don't remember a notation on there that says, and here's part of the high school population that is actually at another school. But I think that you wanted to research that to clarify.
Yeah, I'm going to clarify in the actual study, how those numbers were ran. I'm not, we're actually working on that right now. And part of the answers.
Because I know, like, in our census, we sometimes have Fitzgerald allocated between the schools. So I don't know. I know some of these programs are half-day programs, so they're clearly in the census. So are there any that are not in the census?
Yeah, and the magnet, I would have to, I would have to research that as well. And again, because it's part of that free and appropriate public education. The core instructional program, I would be surprised if you could charge a fee for that, because it's not something that's above and beyond.
Is it something that Fairfield has to offer? Or is it something that Fairfield does offer? Each of those individual schools?
Well, I would say it's something that we, actually by law, I'm not sure in Connecticut. I'd have to double-check, we have to offer it. I would say, I'm glad that we do.
I am too. I'm not saying, these are questions that were asked to me because it's a half a million-dollar number.
Yeah, and I think it is. And one thing, you know, I pointed out with the Board of Finance and I think the Board of Selectmen, is that if we were to bring all of those students that are in magnet schools back to our schools, we would have a problem, because we wouldn't have the seats for them.
Well, and that's why I have to question, are there in our census? If they are, we shouldn't have a problem, because we're already allocating costs for them.
Yeah, we're working on that answer right there.
There was some discussion related to another matter where it was stated by CAE, Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, that we are required to provide information to students. What level of, quote, "marketing" we should support for outside districts to come in and recruit our students, I think was the debate point. But we are required to at least provide information.
I just don't know if we need to provide access at an additional cost. Question that the public has asked me, so I'm passing it along. Thank you.
Yep. Other questions or comments from board members? Mr. Patton.
I apologize for my tardiness. So I'll just throw out the three topics, and if they've been covered already, then I'll take this offline. But 2.0 PE positions, student activity fees, and world language. Have those three been touched upon in any--
Well, all three have been touched on. They may not have answered the questions you have, so I would invite you to follow up with Dr. Jones directly and so that--
Okay, I'll throw the questions out for, I guess, for the record and maybe the TV audience here. On the two PE positions for high school, are those split? Are those single positions? And for which high schools? I mean, for like, is it two for one, one for each?
It's really the 2.0, because we have PE at middle school and high school. We have two openings at elementary right now. So it really is about filling those elementary openings by shuffling staff. And the assumption there is that it's one from each high school.
Okay. Does that make sense?
That is not in stone. So it's just, we know we have two PE openings, and we need to look within that department.
To figure out what we're--
Right.
Okay. For student activity fees, do I want to make the assumption to say that that's essentially bringing back pay-to-play?
Correct.
And is that across the board as opposed to previous years where it was some sports? Or is that for certain categories? Like, I think it was for, the last time it was for outside venues like hockey where we had to rent an extra--
This student number on the activity fee was actually all sports, our competitive sports.
So it's across--
But it is intended also, just because you missed the discussion, to be an activity fee. So it would touch other areas beyond just athletics, but that would take a lot of work with the high school staff before we would, could give you a better number on that.
Right, so that would be school plays, just things in general that would take place in--
We would, we'd have to work really carefully with the high school staff to make sure that we're not hurting kids, you know, from participation. And if they're in a sport and they're also in one of those activities, that they would count together. We wouldn't look at those separately.
I think there's very few things on this list that are not going to hurt kids.
Yep.
And the last thing is the world language program. So that effectively, sadly, after we have started to slowly rebuild that program from a previous cut, that would essentially eliminate the entire elementary school world language program. Is that correct? If you're taking third to fifth grade?
I think it would eliminate what we have today, yes. Do I think that there are other ways that we can infuse world language into elementary? When school districts go through budget cuts, I think that we can. I think there's some phenomenal apps out there that are available that can give you basics in world language. I think that you can actually create an environment within your elementary building that actually infuses lots of vocabulary and kind of make a community building. It is not the same, that's for sure. And we would have to work with our elementary principals to see what that would look like.
Okay, but that line, if that cut goes through, that would essentially eliminate the program as it stands now?
Correct. And you missed part of that discussion, and I think the reason it actually even ended up on here after talking at length with people is that we feel like we're not funding it adequately today. And if we're talking tomorrow about a four to six million dollar cut, is it something that we should still be trying to fund when we know we're not? We don't feel as staff we're doing it adequately right now.
No, and that makes perfect sense. Sadly, I know you've read our history over the last half dozen years in terms of budgeting, and, you know, the plan was to slowly build the program back up in fourth and fifth grade to have, you know, four days, you know, or more a week, and at least 20 minutes if not more. And then to go down to all the younger grades and, you know, a bit at a time, and, you know, baby steps are not as fast as you'd like. So that would be a shame. But, okay, thank you very much.
I think each board member has had an opportunity to talk. Are there final comments people wish to make? Ms. Pitco.
My question is through the chair to Dr. Jones. Just generally, throwing out on tier three, possibly going to a one high school or eliminating an elementary school, our student population is so big, do these even belong on tier three?
What I would say is that if the community or staff have suggested something, and the board wants to explore it, I think it's worthy, it's worthy of exploration. Could we do it? Sure. I mean, I moved here from Northern Virginia where high schools are 3,000 and more, they're huge. And I'm not saying that that's what's best, but if somebody, you know, it's come forward as something we could explore. Again, I know that that's a huge hot topic. And the other thing is, some of those items, when we talk about tier three, we can't do that between now and June. So it's not going to help us with this year's four to six million. It's really being, looking 12, 24, 36 months out, because those are big, big community discussions, and would take a tremendous amount of work.
Other final comments? Okay, I would suggest that board members send comments to Dr. Jones on Mrs. Maxine Cannelli's comment as to, I am really not interested in looking at this, or this is something we really ought to explore. And if you have any ideas that are not mentioned tonight, either on tier one or tier two list or on the tier three suggestions that Dr. Jones has said her staff are continuing to look at, in which I presume at least by title they'll end up in the minutes, please get them to Dr. Jones so that she and her staff can do the very heavy lifting that will be required. But my personal opinion is that if we have any focus, it's not on how to cut, it's how to restore. How to convince our legislators and our local government officials to restore so that we maintain this public school system to be the school system that we're all proud of, that parents move to here for, and that all of our students have benefited from at one point or another. So that finishes our discussion of that item. And on to 4D, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting.
Ms. Dwyer?
Oh, there.
I apologize.
Ms. Maxine Cannelli.
What I just want to make clear, we wouldn't be adding tier one or tier two ideas, because those are all from the staff. So wouldn't anything that we're now adding, I'm just, I want to make sure we're using the right vocabulary. Anything that we're asking about would fall under a tier three category, am I correct? Or a tier four? We can have our own category.
I would say that it's the superintendent's judgment as to whether, well, this is a idea that might be worth 50 or 60,000, it's worth considering, and maybe she'll put it on tier one or tier two. I would leave that in the judgment of the superintendent as to where it belongs. Clearly, tier three are big ideas that, and so saving a small program here or there probably will end up on tier one or two.
And then my next question is, because I'm still concerned about the process here, because, again, I do not want to send your staff on, you know, they're not wild goose chases, they're someone's sincere questions. But before they start doing the heavy lifting of certain things that we could possibly send in, are we going to try to work in any kind of process of sense of the board, yes, please pursue these numbers? Or, again, this is uncharted territory for us, so that's why I ask the question.
We do have, I do have a tool that I have used in the past that I think is helpful, and it's very simplistic. It's basically built in Excel, and we take our tiers, you know, tier one, tier two, tier three, whatever we decide to put on there. Those are all populated. And then it's really nice to send that tool out, Excel-type format. You put in X by all those things that you truly think you could live with, and it calculates for you as you're going so that when you get down to the bottom, you know, oh, gosh, I didn't get very far, I still have 1.8 million dollars to go. And it at least gives you an idea where your comfort zone is. In the past, those have been submitted to me so that I can look at, okay, where are we as a census? Kind of what do those sheets actually look like? And be able to give feedback to the board from looking at the budget tool. So we have that option available. We've started populating it just because I like to use it. So that is something that makes it more simplistic. In the past, we've sent it even out to the community, and I have had great feedback just, you know, allowing your staff and different groups to even weigh in.
So that will be sent out shortly, and board members can use that tool to kind of contemplate the, do I like this and what is it worth? And if you have an idea that is not on that list and you'd like it added to the list, then send in that idea. The staff will do the calculation and add it to the tool.
Right, exactly to that point. What if the one idea that I, as a single board member, send in will involve a week of data research from five sta-- I'm exaggerating. But that's my point of the, it's one thing if it's, oh, that was on two different line items in the budget, easy number to reproduce. But if I'm just asking for something that will in fact be very time-consuming for staff, obviously, the sooner we get you the ideas, then even in April, you could say, this was an idea that was submitted. Is there board interest? Because it's more time-intensive to look up. I mean, again, the example you gave me was that student activity fee. That would involve a lot more manpower, at which point I proceeded to have no interest in researching those numbers, at least for right now. That's my question, is that I don't want staff running all over, getting all of these numbers, if there's absolutely no board interest beyond that one person in doing this. If that's, I just want us all to know that so that there's a process that we understand.
And I think in the past, what I've done, unfortunately, this is something in my previous district, we did every year in these reductions, just because we were growing. And I have found that when you send me something, if it's something I think is not doable because of previous research we've done, or it's a great idea, that's why I can just email you or give you a call and say, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to item 4D, approval of the minutes. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February 14, 2017. Do I have a motion, Mrs. Gerber? Mrs. Maxine Cannelli seconded it. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes of February 14, 2017? Please raise your hand. Mr. Patton, Mrs. Gerber, Philip Dwyer, Mr. Calabrese, Ms. Pitco, Mrs. Maxine Cannelli, opposed. Mr. Llewellyn abstentions. Ms. Carnell. The motion passes. Superintendent's report.
I'll just keep it short. I have a couple of things. First of all, I was able to go and read at Sherman in Riverfield for Read Across America, which is just always fun. I was actually at Riverfield today, because we had a calendar glitch during the week, but love that. The other thing I just want to mention, we've had a couple of snow days here recently, in case nobody knew that. Just as a reminder, when we do have a snow day, you know, it's one of those days that, you know, part of the people are really happy and then part of them are not. And it's, there's always some tough calls made. But I do want to say a special thanks to, you know, the whole team at the town that helped advise our staff early in the morning. We have people that are up as early as spore, start checking the roads, looking at sidewalks. Public Works is involved. In this last storm, we also were having input from the fire department, from the police department. And we wake up that morning, and a lot of times, people will ask us, you know, well, gosh, why did you call school off? It wasn't as bad as what we thought. Or why didn't you call school off? It was worse than what we thought. And it's just a reminder, that process has to start at four and five in the morning before buses ever start rolling. And the hardest storms for us are generally the ones that are going to hit between six and right around when our buses are rolling. So I just want to acknowledge, it is a huge team process. And Mr. Collin and Ms. Leffert were up very early this last couple of days for those snow calls, so thank you for that. Also, just looking at the budget reductions that we've talked about tonight, I just, I can't reiterate enough that this is first pass-through. This is incredibly, incredibly difficult for staff, and they've put in a lot of time and effort, not counting all the questions that we get from the Board of Ed, but the questions we have right now that we're trying to answer for Board of Finance and First Selectmen. And it does take a tremendous amount of effort, and most of them are sitting on the front two rows. So thank you, and then also to our leadership team, who, all of our principals, that kind of did some pretty quick meetings over the last few weeks, just trying to have input on this process. And I do want to also acknowledge, there's some chocolates in front of all of our Board of Education members tonight, because March is Board Appreciation, Appreciation Month. And I don't know why it had to be at this meeting where we have racial imbalance and budget reductions. I wish it was happier topics tonight. But thank you for all the work that you do. Being on the board takes a tremendous, tremendous amount of time, and I can't say enough how much our staff, how much our students and our community really do appreciate that, number one, you're willing to do it, and that you do give up a tremendous amount of time from your own families. So thank you on behalf of all of us.
Questions for the super-- Thank you. Questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, under committee and liaison reports? Any committee or liaison reports? Ms. Pitco, followed by Mrs. Maxine Cannelli.
I just want to mention for SEPTA, for those of you that are special ed PTA, they're having a fundraiser on Saturday, April 1, Lights, Camera, Action. It's from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m. at Annalise's. They have a Twitter account, and you can also email them. This Saturday, this is also on their email, this Saturday is the Board of Finance Annual Budget Common Open Forum, March 18, 9:30 a.m. at Fairfield-Ludlow High School Auditorium. They're having a CES Transition Resource Expo, Wednesday, March 22, at 5:30. Special Needs Planning Seminar, Thursday, March 30, at 7:30, seven o'clock. And it's SEPTA Team Night, Friday, March 31, at the YMCA.
Mrs. Maxine Cannelli.
At Monday's PTA Council meeting, I just wanted to thank Dr. Jones for coming to speak to PTA Council. She always comes, but this was a very, a lengthier meeting, and I just wanted to thank all of the PTA presidents and the PTA Council representatives who came to that meeting. It was a very well-attended meeting with a lot of good questions about, it was very budget-focused, just making sure that parents realize what's going on, and they just provide such a critical role for getting that communication back to their school communities. So just, again, very well-attended meeting and a lot of good questions for us.
Any other committee or liaison reports? Mr. Patton.
Haven't said too much about the Board of Health in the last few months, but there's just a few-- there's just a few things that have been going on, um, there are several, uh, tools, as opposed to policies, um, that we have passed, uh, tools are basically, um, suggestions and, uh, information that's given to mostly the nursing staff at, uh, the various schools around town to deal with certain situations, um, and, uh, things like, you know, how students who are, um, potentially seen as abusing substances and are caught, and how those things are handled, um, if students are noticed to have hurt themselves or in any capacity, um, voluntary or not, you know, how those things are handled, um, and, uh, so, a lot of those things have been kind of revamped for the nursing staff, um, there's not a lot of details that we would, I would say here at the, at the board table, but, uh, your children are safer now than they certainly have ever been, um, and the Board of Health is making sure that, um, all these types of, again, tools, as opposed to policies, are in place, so that, uh, um, things aren't left vague when you wonder why a nursing staff person might have made this decision versus, uh, that decision. There's also a new program, uh, on lighter, lighter note, the Board of Health also oversees things like the, um, the free bike rental rides, um, that, I'm drawing a, a blank on the, um, the bike company that's downtown Fairfield, where you basically go and you sign up and you can take a bike out and go ride around the beach, and they give you a free padlock, um, if you go to the Board of Health website, um, and look under Bike Share, uh, you will see a new little video that Sands Clary, the Director of Health, personally, uh, filmed, edited, and, uh, and wrote, uh, it's very cute, um, and, uh, it's one of the great things that, you know, we can offer in this town that are, you know, funded by, um, you know, sources that, uh, you know, don't affect our town budget so much, and, you know, those are free things, and, uh, that is about it. Uh, there's new, uh, a few months ago, we have a new, uh, Board of Health Chair, Dr. Henry Yun, who's been on the board for quite a while, um, he is, um, the health liaison, besides being a physician, uh, to the city of Stanford, so he's very, very knowledgeable for large cities and, uh, a town the size of Fairfield in terms of health issues going on, um, and, uh, much more than the previous chair, I will say that he is, uh, very willing to work with the Board of Health, with the, with the Board of Education in terms of, uh, policies and the policy committee, uh, Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli would hopefully be gracious to hear that, that, um, uh, we have not had that opportunity before, that has been kind of pushed to the side when we've asked for help from the Board of Health on issues like, uh, the food and allergy policies and such, so, uh, look forward to that relationship growing. Bye.
Anything else on committee liaison reports? On the Holland Hill Building Committee, uh, they're moving forward to the design development phase of drawings, uh, which will allow them to refine the estimate, which then will allow them to move the, uh, official three resolutions that have to be passed by various town boards prior to June thirtieth forward, um, and, uh, their primary task is to work and get through the various town commissions they have to get through for any development project, and they're working very hard to achieve that by the June thirtieth date. Uh, with no, uh, further committee liaison reports, open board comment, do we have any board members that wish to make a comment? Mrs. Maxon-Cannelli.
Well, very excited to report this Saturday, March eighteenth, um, for anyone not going to the Board of Finance Public Forum, uh, Public Hearing, that it is the state competition for Odyssey of the Mind, and I'm very, very proud to report that there will be three teams going up from McKinley, uh, one team up from Stratfield, and then we have two new schools that are part of the program, Sherman will be sending, Sherman Elementary will be sending a team, as will North Stratfield, um, so, best wishes, good luck, good luck to them, unfortunately, I can't go, I'll be teaching an SAT class, uh, but I just, I'm so excited for them, I'm so excited for the growth of the program, and I can't wait to see the results on Sunday, so, just, best wishes from me and hopefully on behalf of the whole board, and if anybody wants to go, let me know.
Other comments from the board, open board comment, other comments from the board on open board comment? Mr. Calabrese.
I just want to reiterate one more time to the public that's left here, and, uh, those at home, and hopefully this will play before Saturday, of how important it is to actually come out and advocate for our budget and the, uh, the restoration of the two million dollars that we'd like to see back in the budget, um, the Board of Finance needs to hear that, the public needs to hear that, we have been inundated with emails from the, the Fairfield taxpayer group, as I know many of you know, um, you've got to combat that as best we can, and the only way to do that is by getting out there and speaking for the budget, so I, I urge you all to do that.
Um, only, uh, two items, I too read at Riverfield, uh, 4D, uh, and got a very nice, uh, thank you note afterwards from, uh, signed by all of the students, uh, if you're invited to read in one of our schools, they very much appreciate the fact that a member of the Board of Education shows up, that their teacher emphasizes that they're a member of the Board of Education, I'm not quite sure they know what that means, but the teacher at least impresses them that it means something. Uh, secondly, uh, you know that we had on our agenda to close school on June sixth in anticipation of the Board of Selectmen making a decision to hold a special election on June sixth, uh, that question ended up in court, and the judge has acted and, uh, put an order, um, ordered, an order from the court that sets June sixth as a special election day, um, and so will place that item on the June, on the April sixth, I think it's sixth, uh, agenda for action by this, this board. Okay, public comment, this is a time in the agenda where anybody that wishes to come forward and speak may do so, um, on agenda items, anybody wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
I was told there wasn't public comment. Um, how long do I have?
So, to explain, just before you start, sorry, uh, this is a special meeting, and our bylaws don't call for public comment at special meetings, um, but, uh, felt that due to the nature of the conversation we're having tonight, that it seemed appropriate, so, uh, public comment is welcome.
I had a quick question, Dr. Jen, that, the, the, the number on the special fees seems a little low, I mean, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, I mean, I'm just curious, how did you get that, did you estimate like a certain dollar amount per student, per...
And, and as you know, we take public comment, but we're not in a...
Oh, all right, all right, I, I just wanted, um...
But, but, uh, but that calls, uh, Dr. Jones to be, to clarify how they arrived at the number the next time we talk about it.
All right, um, I, as far as, I know a lot of people don't like the theory of play-to-play, but I'd rather have the option of having, of, I'd rather have the fee for a service than not have a service. Uh, I was worried, looking at, when it said bus fee, my sons go to, uh, Wakeman, there's an extra bus there, they don't pay for it at Wakeman, or there's no charge for that, if that bus went away, my ability to have a job would be extremely hard, because that, they can stay till nine thirty, I mean, I've never done that yet, but, um, they can stay till nine thirty, five days a week at Wakeman, to get like a sitter or something like that would just be almost impossible, I wouldn't be able to have a job if that bus went away. Um, there's one for, my, my one, and, and my sons go to two different schools, but they, I can meet them at Wakeman, so I'd rather, if, if it, if it came to that there had to be a fee for that, I'd rather have the fee for that service than not have the service, and as far as like, like even freshman sports, I would pay almost anything to have freshman sports, and we, I mean, I, my mind races sometimes, but we have an opioid epidemic in Connecticut, I worry, if my sons are not doing sports or something like that, what are they going to get into? I, I mean, I spent a lot, I mean, I, I took the regular bus in high school, five times total out of, you know, all three, when I was in high school, that kept me out of doing really bad things, you, I mean, please don't kill, I would pay almost any fee imaginable, I mean, I know, that's what Fa, Fairfield taxpayer wants to hear, they want to hear, oh, yeah, we'll cover the difference, no problem, but I would pay almost anything to, to keep the options open for the extra things that my children need, and the other thing is, I mean, you, you can't have, you can't close a high school, I mean, that, I mean, there, no one would ever buy a house in Fairfield if that happened, I mean, it's just that simple, I mean, I'll try to make this point on Saturday, but if we ever closed a high school, that would just, it would, it would just be a surrender, it would, it would basically say that Fairfield schools are done, and, I mean, we can never, we can never let that happen, if that ever happened, it would, the mark on this, and it would never open again, maybe, you know, twenty-five years from now or something like that, um, but we, we can't ever, and, I mean, honestly, I think hard times make hard, I mean, I, I think we should try to go to the teachers, I mean, no one likes to talk about renegotiating contracts or laying down the hammer, but we have to say, look, if we don't, we have to lay out this many teachers now, if you, if we can't come to an agreement or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to come forward and state your name and address, please?
Suzanne Misca, one twenty-three High Gate Road, I, I'm going to meld these two topics together, one racial imbalance and one the budget, the first suggestion I might suggest that we ask the public to also do is the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, when it comes time, they can set the mill rate lower and leave the nine million pension out there pending the state determination, um, and if that comes through, then there would have to be a special assessment done, um, so that is an option that you can be asking them to do. The other thing is, um, these two items kind of join together, no matter how we look at it, um, we have a racial imbalance plan where we're building Holland Hill and we're going to, you know, increase Mill Hill, and then we have a tier three problem where we're going down to one high school and closing an elementary school, so, we have a situation where, as a town and as a board, um, we need to come together and create one plan, one plan that solves all of these situations, because, um, while I do not like what's being passed down by the state any more than anyone else, especially on the pension, um, I hate to think that this is not going to become a reoccurring situation, you know, the governor is not going to find money up there, and either we're going to pay it in the state tax, or we're going to pay it in a local tax, so a big discussion has to happen, and while I appreciate all the work that's been done in tier one and tier two, in order to set some sort of direction for where we're going as a district and as a town, we have to have a conversation, and it has to come as a town, not just nine members of a board in a school district, and, and I appreciate that there's all different fractions always at budget time, but we have to come to a respectful discussion as to what we're going to do here, and, and it hasn't happened, we tend to do things in fragments and stick Band-Aids on them, and so I'm going to ask, as we look at racial imbalance and the timeline, one thing that was positive was in October, we're going to have some sort of visioning conference, and I think that's great, but we need to really understand what that is and really move in that direction. I don't think now's the time for open choice, I agree with the Board of Finance on that, and I know that's part of the plan, but at some point, we have to cut and say, we can't do it, we just can't, but we also have to have a discussion, if we're thinking of a one high school scenario again, or cutting and losing an elementary school, then maybe we got to really rethink Holland Hill and Mill Hill, maybe we have to have this discussion looking at both plants, not separate. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and speak? Well, whoever gets the microphone first, state your name and address.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Tenelli-Viando, uh, I grew up in Fairfield, I'm raising my four children in Fairfield, my children range from kindergarten through junior year in high school, I emailed you all this week, thank you for, many of you for responding. Um, you touched on the aquatic therapy, and I just wanted to say, I have, my second son has Down Syndrome, and he's fourteen, and he's been in the program from kindergarten, he's in eighth grade this year, it's done amazing, amazing things for him, um, besides the physical therapy in the pool, it has helped him with self-care, showering, dressing, um, money skills, he brings coins, and he has to, if he does a good job, he gets to use the healthy vending machine, he has to count his change, I mean, there's just so many aspects to this program, if you are thinking about cutting it, I suggest every single one of you go visit it, um, there are children in wheelchairs, this is their only pain-free therapy all week long, um, so before you do cut it, I suggest you go take a look, because it's not just a swim program, it's, it's, it's needed therapy for many, many children.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, please come forward, state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Sarah Hofer, I'm the District Music Coordinator, I'm a former, um, music department student, I'm a product of it, and I'm back here teaching and running it, and I, I just love everything about it, truly, I just wanted to give you a few numbers with regard to the fourth grade orchestra cut, currently, we have five hundred and thirty-eight students enrolled in that program, um, and two hundred and fifty-three in fifth grade, so a total of seven hundred and ninety-one elementary string students. If you cut fourth grade strings, it doesn't just delay a start, it actually impacts the whole program on what ends up happening when they get all the way up through high school, um, that is a detriment, would be a detrimental cut to our program. Um, it's begun in fourth grade because students need to begin with the two lessons per week, it's, they're difficult instruments, the instruments are the size, they, they come in smaller sizes, so students can, um, have access sooner, we would love to start band in fourth grade as well, but, um, recognize the cost of that, and also the size of the instruments, you know, it's, the fourth grade strings is important for that, um, and if they don't start with a good quality foundation in fourth grade, they'll, they won't continue, and then you'd see a loss all the way up, we have such a phenomenal middle school program in strings, we have four hundred and sixty students enrolled there, and a hundred and eighty-seven high school string students, the program's growing, um, we had just recently seventy-nine students request concert orchestra next year as freshmen and sophomores at one of the high schools, it's, it's a growing program, and I would hate to see something, um, done to take away from that growth, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Please state your name and address.
Thank you, hi, Carolyn Trubuco, two twenty-one Sherwood Farm Road, um, I really hope that the teacher retirement proposal by the governor does not come to pass this year, um, and I hope it doesn't come to pass in any year, um, that said, um, when I look at the environment that we're in, I think it's really important that we do look rigorously at opportunities for our district to make the structural change that we can make, that would improve our district, and when we do that, I think it's important to list them out in terms of assets, operations, core curriculum, non-core curriculum, and task members of the Board of Education to look at each of those components. I think what you might find is we're coming into this environment pretty asset-heavy, I think we have a lot of buildings, I think that may work against us, I think we have a shrinking elementary population that might lend itself to the day where we might be able to strategically shrink our footprint, those are strategic operations, um, that are best undertaken with care and time and analysis, um, I am thrilled to see the comprehensive nature of the tier one, tier two, and tier three proposals that you put together, I think they've left, um, they've left no stone unturned, unturned in terms of thinking about what could be done, um, I ask you to take a step further and really consider ways to avoid getting into the situation where we're having to choose between assets and programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to come forward and state your name and address?
Yeah, hi, my name is Amy Dutter, and I live at Seventy Sider Mill Lane here in town, and have been here for twenty-five years, and currently have an eighth grade son, and two that went through the schools here and have both graduated, and I simply want to reinforce and underscore, if I may, the importance of the music program that Sarah Hofer mentioned briefly, I also, I'm a Fairfield parent, but also, um, am one of the co-presidents of the Fairfield Music Parents Association, and have seen firsthand with my children, but with all these hundreds of children that are involved in our music program, how pivotal and how instrumental, pun there, uh, the music program is to our town, from that fourth grade string program and the lesson program all the way on through, having watched and learned year after year, being involved in the MPA, the increasing number of kids that are confidently auditioning for things like all regional and all state, we've had, I believe, for the last four years in a row, we've had kids from Ward and Ludlow make the all-national ensembles, and that's really a testament, need I say, to the program that we have in this town, um, starting with that fourth grade strings program where they really build the technique and the skills, I saw it with my own sons, and then introducing band in fifth grade, and they go on from there, and the numbers really bear this out, more kids, I believe I learned that we have seventy kids now at Osborne Hill School in the fourth grade strings, which really speaks volumes for itself, and, uh, at, at the two high schools, the programs are, they're rigorous, and they're, they're... And at the two high schools, the programs are, they're rigorous, and they're, they're well-attended, and these are the kids that are asked to, they perform at Candlelight, and they, I know my son was part of something singing for Dr. Tittle when he retired, and these kids, they love sharing their music efforts. And I just, I really hope that we can continue to recognize the pivotal value that that program has for our kids. And I look forward to coming on Saturday, but thank you so much for your time and for listening.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and so state your name, and please remember to sign the sign-in sheet. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name's Ellen Blumberg. I'm a parent at Osborne Hill. I live on Fairview Avenue. And I was just brought to tears by the woman talking about the aquatics program. And so I was just broke away hurt because I don't have a child that pays for the shoes. But I would pay triple tax to make sure that those kids just get what they needed. I'm new to town. My husband and I moved our two children from Manhattan, where we could choose private school, we could choose another town, and one of the reasons we picked Fairfield was because it was diverse in many, many ways, but a lot of other towns weren't. And I want my son to be around lots of different kids, and I, I just can't believe to hear a parent have to beg, to give their kid what they need. And I'm not in that boat, but I will volunteer or help or do. I think that's part of what we need to rally, is more parents. Parents shouldn't be leaving this meeting an hour early. They should be here. I think parents need to get more involved to help, and I think we're all very busy. We all have a lot of commitments, but we have to be even more committed to what's important to us. And I am embarrassed to say, I don't know who any of you are, or what your jobs are, or what you do, or what your views are, and I'm sure there's a website that explains that, but it's not easy to find, and it's not easy to know. And I think that there's a closed door between the schools and the parents a lot of the time, to keep schedules and security and whatnot, but I don't, I'm new. I don't, I don't know who you are, or what you do, and I don't know how I can help more. But I want to, and I think there's probably 100 other parents behind me that want to. So if things are going to get cut before things are off the table, I think there should be a call to, how can we help? Whether we volunteer more, whether we are part of the music program, whether I'm washing paintbrushes for the art teacher, or helping put away lunch trays, I will do it. And I just hope that we get more involved. So thank you.
Thank you for your passion. Anybody else wish to come forward and state your name and address? Thank you.
Dawn Loelen, Fairfield. I was trying to, I wanted to make it earlier to speak at the public hearing, but I was administering a math kangaroo contest to students in our district that represent about nine of our elementary, of our 11 elementary schools here. It's a, it's a math contest for students who want to advance in math. It's a national test. My children tutor them. Every Sunday, these students come because of the enrichment that they don't get in our public schools, in this public school district. So, and I hear that we're going to be reducing a lot of other items on this list possibly, but I wanted to talk about the open choice, because as we begin to spend more money on students out of district, we're going to continually take away from students in our district, the students that want the advancement, the students that just want other types of programs. I'm asking if this board nicks the open choice on the racial imbalance and the pre-K that is non-mandated. We're going to be spending extra money. And I know that the 3,000 that we currently get for the 72 students, and correct me if I'm speaking out of term, anything above that we would give in-district services to these students, we have not been collecting over the years. So we've been not getting reimbursed by Bridgeport for these students, so we've lost some money there. So I'm just asking that, we follow maybe what the state has been asking us to do for seven years, I believe, seven or six, is to redistrict. Even if it's mini-redistrict, pocket-redistricting, it's going to save us money in a time that we really need to start saving money. Because, like the woman that was up here before me, she was upset that we had to cut an aquatic program. And we're going to have, we're going to see more of this. We're just building out these schools, enrollment is down. It's projected to be down. So I just don't understand why we're building bigger schools to bring students out of district in, and then we're going to take away programs from our current students. So I'm just asking if the board could, or the district could readdress the racial imbalance plan, please.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward and state your name and address?
Hi, I'm Gurley Jasper from, I'm in the Burr School. It's my first time. We just moved into Fairfield, and I actually walked into this building ready to be disappointed. And I'm glad that I'm wrong, because it sounds like you guys are actually have some concern for our kids, and that you're actually here to work for our kids. And I hope, I hope that that is true. I mean, a lot of people have already left the room, but there's also a lot of us that remained here, and we all have different agendas. We all have, you know, we want to make sure that all of the concerns that we have for our kids are covered. And I hope that you do read our emails. You're going to be hearing a lot from me. I don't, like, that lady, you know, that spoke before, she doesn't know you, I don't know you guys either. And I will make it a point to know who you are. I will make it a point to stand up and speak for, not only for my kid, but also for all the kids that go to Fairfield. I mean, we moved to Fairfield for a reason. We moved on our street for a reason. So hopefully, that you'll continue to, again, put our kids' interests, best interests in, as a priority while you're sitting at the board. With the current climate that we have in this country, it seems like kids are taking a backseat. Education is taking a backseat, and I hope that that's not going to be true for Fairfield in the coming years, you know, in the near future and for years to come. That's all.
Thank you very much. You know, there's an open seat up here, Mr. Convertito.
Give me a ear. John Convertito, 62 Wester Road. And I do know you. And I know the work that you do, and I am grateful for it, as are the people in this What's in front of you is a very daunting task. One, because of the numbers that it presents to you, and two, because of the unknown it presents to you as well. I would suggest to you, given the conditions in Hartford, that if it doesn't happen this year, something will happen next year or the year after. And whether it's, we get hit with a state tax or whatever, people of this town are still paying that, that vote. I would urge you, and I know this is not an easy task, stop looking at programming. Look structurally. Look at asset usage, asset utilization, where you can condense and where you can utilize better. I think if you look at those tier ones and you, or those tier threes, and you look deeply, you will find that you can reduce your baseline, not only for this year, but for going forward. Okay? And we've had some discussions with these in previous years on the periphery. Now is the time to do your homework on those. Look structurally. You're never going to get to one high school, okay? That's not going to happen. You do have two small elementary schools in this town, which you might better utilize as a Walter Fitzgerald campus or a central office, okay? And eliminate another asset or two. Look structurally. I urge you to do that before you touch programming. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? State your name and address, and please fill out the form.
I'm Rabab Hassan Sayed. I'm 579 Jed Street. Again, thank you for your time and for listening, and for your concern for our children as well. It's a very tough spot that we all find ourselves in, certainly. I have a fourth-grader at Osborne, and I have a kindergartner at Osborne. My kindergartner has been diagnosed with autism, so needless to say, he has been benefiting a great deal from the CLC program that you have, which provides an applied behavior analysis classroom within Osborne for him. So much that he's benefited so much, he's increased his regular time within his kindergarten classroom with his phenomenal peers, and just the support staff, the paraprofessionals, the specials. He loves his music. He loves his art. He is absolutely thriving in the Fairfield School District, and we actually also moved here recently, and specifically moved to Fairfield primarily for both our boys to benefit from the education system. And I know if we all had a choice, we wouldn't even be here, but the fact that we are, I completely agree with the gentleman who just laid out a pretty interesting way to maybe take into consideration and not go for the programs. My main concern is, we're really, we have, what, 4.6 million to cut at this point? What's next? Is it the special needs? Because I don't know what I'd do or where I'd take my son if that was the case. And, you know, again, if there's any way that we could change our situation, or fight, or whatever you need us to do, we are willing to do as parents, as taxpayers, as voters, what have you. We can apply pressure. Someone has a plan, let us know, because I don't think a single cent should be cut from anything at all. And, you know, give us something to work with, and we will, I'm sure, come out full force and figure something out, because all, just, not just my boys, but everyone is certainly benefiting from every single program out there. And, you know, I'm at a loss, and of what to say, what to do, I don't know. But, you know, we're showing up, we're here, and you're listening, so that's a huge start for us. So thank you for your time, and just wanted to share that it's a huge concern for all of us. But, yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? Unfortunately, we've already made a sales pitch for Saturday, and you're only allowed, you're only allowed to speak once, Mr. Huntsman. Who else wishes to come forward? Who else wishes to come forward?
Please. Talk like that Saturday, please. Just give me-
Mr. Huntsman, please, let the speaker speak.
Steve Cerny, I've moved to Fairfield in 1981. Seems like forever ago. And I have three kids, one in each Fairfield, Roger Ludlow Middle, and the high school. I'd like to just talk about the racial imbalance plan. I look at the benchmark planning, and it is like dizzying how much more work is involved of following 2%. And I just stress that maybe there's a way to deal with that, of maybe stopping new enrollments with the open choice, maybe even to the point of incentivizing families from McKinley to fill spots in elementary schools that are open. I know adding cost is not going to work, so a cost benefit, you probably could throw, you know, get a number of what would be saved with saving on consultant fees, advertising to draw families to McKinley, additional open-choice costs, school expansion costs to fill seats for, not filling for, open-choice families. Not going through a redistricting to deal with this problem. And the time of all the people involved to chase after the 2% for the benchmarking seems ridiculous. So I would just ask that you maybe look at some different possibilities, some different options to save a lot of time and money. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address, and please sign in. Thank you.
Okay. Bob Smoller, I'm president of the Fairfield Education Association. Just for everybody's identification, I mean, the frustrating part of all this, of course, is that this is all a false narrative. Nobody believes the $9 million cuts coming through. Maybe something down in the future, but obviously, we're imposing a set of restrictions on ourselves and therefore operating on that basis, and I understand that. I do want to echo something Dr. Jones said. You know, we have stretched the band about as thin as it can be stretched. You have an extremely stressed-out staff already, working to the nth degree, and, you know, we need to make sure, whatever actions are taken here, that we have a staff that's sane enough at the end of the day to be able to work well with children and deliver the services that we are going to deliver. So I guess the one thing that I would say, if you have a set of guiding principles that are going to carry you through this exercise, I would just say that, let's make sure that whatever we end up with at the end of the day, we can do well. And we don't end up having a lot of programs that we can't, we can't execute properly. Instead, let's stick with the things that we can do a good job on, and give the staff a running chance to be successful at their jobs with their students, give the students a running chance of being successful with their education. And so hopefully, we can, we can accomplish that at the end of the day. Hopefully, we don't have to go through this exercise, and I do believe myself that if everybody in this room does put the proper pressure on the various elected officials, that we can get out of this narrative. But if we are going to accept this false narrative that we've been, we've been charged with, you know, I hope that those are some of the outcomes that can come out of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Please state your name and address, and if you would, sign the form.
My name is Patty Bellato. I'm a resident of Fairfield, 74 Twinbrooks Lane. I grew up in Fairfield, went to Mill Hill, Tomlinson, and Ludlow. Moved back here about 22 years ago. Have adopted two children. One child went through the school system already, and one is in Ludlow. And I just want, I'm here not only for all, to speak on behalf of the other programs, but specifically for the music program. I'm co-chair, or co-president of the Music Parents Association. And personally, I have seen my son, who struggled a little bit in high, in elementary school, and when he got to the fourth grade and took the strings course, I could not believe when he started to play music, how well his math score went up, to the point where he went into the gifted program. And I just saw, that's just one child that the music made a difference for, and I'm just really, really hopeful that you'll consider, reconsider the fourth-grade strings. Also, in the high school alone, there's over 800 students that are in the music program, which is about 28% of the body, of school body. And there are a lot of students that do not know how to play sports, are not good at playing sports, are not very competitive, and I happen to have two of those students. And so I'm just very, if it wasn't for Fairfield Music Program, my daughter wouldn't be majoring in music right now at Bucknell. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward? I wonder if this is the last speaker, but-
Perhaps.
-please state your name and address, and fill, sign the form if you would.
Hi, John Plattner, 967 Churchill Road. Just moved here in June from New Jersey, where the taxes are higher, but the problems are the same. So we came here because the schools are great. I think I would echo several of the folks here, where you're going to have problems in the death of a thousand cuts for Program A, B, C, D, E. I think, I really appreciate the transparency and the work that you've done so far in the tier-one, too, but I would, I would strongly urge you to look at structural, structural opportunities. I think you'll find that folks at this point in time are ready for those challenges. I would also echo the other gentleman who asked for a choice. I think you'll find that parents will step, will step up and help with painting or after school activities. Maybe add in your models, the idea that some of your funding can come from volunteer. Something to think about. So just try and focus on the structural, and, sorry, the last thing was, your list of tiers one and two, some of that is deferring, and others are cutting ongoing. I think really need to identify what the difference is between those, because some of that, you're not going to be able to defer for many years, and I would assume that you're, this money's not going to come back. So- So, that will just hurt you in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wish to come forward to present to the Board of Education? I see nobody standing up, so thank you very much. At this point in the agenda, we typically will adjourn. If you've seen the agenda, you'll know that we're having a superintendent evaluation. We have a new superintendent, and so, we thought that after 90 days, we ought to just check in and see how things are going. There's nothing specific that we're talking about. There will not be any action that comes out of this executive committee, other than adjourning the meeting. So, you are welcome to stay if you wish to wait until we finish, so you can watch us adjourn. Or you can leave. For the TV crew that is here, again, you are welcome to stay to capture that last motion, or you can clean up, because to the board members, we will be retiring to a room that is somewhere off the stage. I don't know exactly where, but I presume that some staff member can guide us there. Thank you very much.